Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our, uh, our planning commission meeting for Tuesday, April sixteenth, uh, to order. And Tammy, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Levante. Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Mercero.
Oh, he stepped away.
I know he's.
There he's back.
Commissioner Mercero, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag salute, please. Okay, we have our consent agenda that we're gonna go through, and the approval of our meeting minutes, and then our regular agenda with the monthly planning report. And then item number three is a public hearing for DR dash twenty-four dash zero one, the expansion of existing IC SB building, which includes addition of a new fifteen, fifteen hundred square foot secondary story on the existing building, and addition of a new three thousand nine hundred, nine hundred square foot two-story building attached to the rear of the existing building. Um, and then we'll have business from the public and business from the planning commission. So, do I have a motion for the approval of the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes?
I reviewed the minutes and didn't have any corrections, so I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Langston made the motion to approve the meeting minutes, the seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Can you please do a roll call? Tammy?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss.
Yes.
Mr. Langston.
Yes.
Mr. Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, uh, the meeting, uh, the approval of the March nineteenth meeting minutes has been approved. Uh, our second item is our monthly planning report. Ms. Austin?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Um, I have the planning report in the packet for March, and I wanted to just call out a couple of items, one being that the city council did approve the home occupation language that you forwarded um, with an expansion of the approval area from one hundred to two hundred feet, uh, excuse me, the notice area. Um, they thought that notifying neighbors a little bit further out made more sense for, um, that type of use. Um, I also wanted to point out that next week we have the joint work session, but I think you all already covered that. So at five thirty PM next Tuesday, the city council and planning commission will meet together to begin the discussion about parking reform, um, based on the climate-friendly and equitable communities, rulemaking that we are subject to as a metro city. Um, and then the city council will, at their May fourteenth date, um, choose an option. There's options that you can discuss and choose from, um, to give us guidance to move forward. Um, and we are gonna be required to update our development code with whatever parking changes we decide to go with by the end of this year. So that's coming your way. Otherwise, it was a pretty standard, um, month customer service-wise, maybe a little slow because of spring break, a week off there. Any questions about the monthly planning report?
Um, in regards to the new, what we're gonna discuss regarding parking, that's gonna be in conjunction with what the state of Oregon has decided about not having any parking restrictions.
So it'll be in addition to what we already are required to have in place. Um, as of, uh, January first, twenty twenty-three, we were required to not mandate any parking within a half mile of McLaughlin. Um, and we were subject to, uh, requiring a maximum of, a maximum minimum of one space per multifamily housing unit. And then that's the basic, everybody who's subject to the CFAC standards has to do that right now. Um, and then moving forward, there's options for how you reform parking in the rest of your city.
Will we be meeting here?
Yes.
Okay, at five thirty. Okay, great. Any questions or input? Bless you, Commissioner Mercero. Okay, um, thank you very much, Heather. Uh, let's move on to item number three. The public hearing for DR dash twenty-four dash zero one, uh, the expansion of an existing IC SB building. Um, I'd like to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering, uh, what's already been addressed. And the procedure we would like to follow tonight is, first we'll start with the planning department report, then applicant testimony, proponent testimony, opponent testimony, and then applicant rebuttal, uh, decision to continue or close the hearing, and then planning commission discussion and decision. Now, does any commission member wish to disqualify him, himself or herself for any personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight? Or does any commission member wish to report any significant expertise or pre-hearing contacts?
No expertise contact. Um, I've been by the site and I'll be participating tonight.
Okay.
Uh, I, I did drive by on the way here today, and I haven't had no expertise contact.
I've been by the site, uh, no interest, uh, plan on, uh, being a participating, no expertise contact.
Commissioner Mercero?
I, uh, have no expertise contact, and, uh, I did not go past the replace recently, but, uh, I'm pretty close to it.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
I've been by it numerous times, and, uh, I've had no expertise contact. And, uh, I have no reason to disqualify myself.
Okay, um, no expertise, uh, contact for myself. I have driven past the facility, uh, on Arlington, and I fully plan on participating this evening. So, um, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Okay. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the city council on this matter? Um, Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing or in the alternate, alternative to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. If you're going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please present the report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. We have a PowerPoint, so we'll cue that up here. Thank you, Tammy. So, as Chair Smith stated, we are here for a design review application for the IC SB for an expansion to the existing building and site, um, which also includes removal of the home shown in this picture that is, um, now under the same ownership as the IC SB building. Um, this picture is from Google Maps. Forgot to give it credit there. Um, the proposal is to expand the existing commercial structure, which includes an addition of a second story on part of the existing building and a two-story building expansion in the rear of the site. Um, additionally, parking and landscaping are proposed. Up in the right corner, you can see the two parcels in a blue outline in the C-two community commercial zoning district. Um, there are no overlays. Um, the floodplain does have the two-hundred-year floodplain on this property, but that does not require floodplain permit, so it doesn't get close enough to, um, triggering that for us to review. The neighboring properties to the north, um, R-zoned R-five residential, so just, um, to keep that in mind. I know we have, um, received some testimony about that, uh, split of zoning there between residential and commercial. Um, address of the site is one forty West Arlington Street. Four thirty. Oh, four thirty, excuse me, wrong address, um, carryover from another Arlington project that didn't get corrected. Thank you, Tammy. Four thirty West Arlington Street, my apologies. Four thirty and four twenty specifically, the home also. Um, property size, ten thousand square feet. Each of these lots are original Gladstone-plated five thousand square foot lots. Apologies for that. Thank you for catching that. Um, the submitted site plan, I tried to go piece by piece just to try to make it a little more clear here. Um, a second story will be added to a portion of the existing building, not the front, um, foyer area that already has the clear story windows, but behind that, a new two-story building extension, so, um, accessible via the internal, um, building, but, um, to the rear of the site. Uh, pedestrian connectivity goes from the sidewalk on West Arlington through to the rear of the site where there's a door at the back end of the building. Landscaping, um, does meet the, um, more than fifteen percent or more of the site. They are a little bit over fifteen percent with the landscaping proposed. And then parking, um, and loading area, uh, based on those CFAC standards, are not required to provide parking, but because they are choosing to provide six-vehicle parking spaces, they do have to meet our dimensional standards and landscaping standards, um, for those parking spaces. And also in that gray area is the proposed trash enclosure. Um, in your packet was, uh, that this, uh, it was not in your electronic packet, it was submitted only in hard copy. Um, but as far as the building materials, it'll be similar to the existing building, using the same color scheme and same material scheme, um, for the building expansion. So more of the orange, um, color and then the gray for the other portions. Um, same on the other side, more of the gray. This is along the west and north exteriors. Um, no windows on these sides of the building, which are adjacent to, um, the property lines. These are the two frontages that would be right against the property lines. No metals proposed for a siding material, so no special approvals needed for this one, as we've seen in some of our more industrial-type developments recently. Um, so I just wanted to go through some of the findings that are in the staff report. The use is permitted and existing, um, in the C-two community commercial zoning district. Uh, the proposal generally meets the criteria for development of a commercial building in the C-two zoning district. The building materials and building design generally meet the code for seventeen four for building siding design. And where there have been found deficiencies in meeting any of those sections, we are recommending conditions to bring the proposal into compliance with city standards. Um, there were a few dimensional issues, like with, uh, landscaping things that I'll go over in a second, but, um, in looking at the site as a whole, it did seem very reasonable that the applicant could make minor adjustments and fit, um, on the site. Um, where we would recommend denial on a project like this is if we couldn't see a way that they could do that, if something would make the project unfeasible as proposed. But I think there is space here to, to make this work. Um, so the recommendation is for approval of the design review with the following special conditions. Um, the first is the same that we've seen before, which is not to operate between the hours of twelve AM and five AM. Um, this one I thought was appropriate because of it being a vet clinic. Sometimes those do dip into emergency services type things, so I just wanted to make it clear that if anything was to occur during those hours, that a conditional use permit would be required by this body, um, and another round of notice and another public hearing to be able to approve that. Um, all mechanical equipment and refuge storage must be screened on the site and from neighboring properties. Um, the applicant, uh, is needing to submit a photometric plan for the lighting in the parking area. They submitted their, uh, lighting that's on the current building and on the proposed building, but didn't submit a lighting plan for the parking area. Um, they shall meet the requirements of the Public Works, uh, comment letter dated March seventh, twenty twenty-four. Um, and here, there is a typo in your written staff report that I, um, wrote March seventh, twenty twenty-three. So it is actually March seventh, twenty twenty-four that the Public Works Department provided that memo. Um, so I'd like to make that change to the written staff report. Um, and then in addition, um, a revised site plan showing the following elements. Uh, fifteen-foot minimum spacing between loading area and residential zoning to the north. Um, the standard is twenty, uh, to space loading area to, um, residential zoning. However, there is the design review exception allowed for up to, uh, twenty percent, is twenty-five percent. So you can reduce that down to fifteen if you feel like that makes sense. That is a discretionary standard. You can require a twenty-foot, uh, setback between the loading area and the rear property line, which is residentially zoned on the other side. Fifteen foot is the minimum, though, that needs to be provided. Um, along the eastern property line, there were, uh, as proposed, it's four and a half feet of landscaping and a half-foot curb. And the code is pretty clear that that needs to be the full five feet of landscaping and then the curb, uh, separating the parking area. And the same applies to the ten-foot requirement separating the parking from Arlington Street. The plans show nine and a half feet, but a full ten is required. These I felt pretty comfortable with, um, given the fact that the trash enclosure is quite a bit larger than it's required to be. So I think that the spacing from Arlington Street is very manageable. And then, um, that exception also allows you to either reduce the drive aisle by half a foot or the parking spaces by half a foot. Either way, meets the criteria here and is well within the design review approval criteria. Um, all HVAC-type equipment must be set back ten feet from the residential property to the north. So whether it's on top of the roof or sitting on the ground, um, adjacent to the loading area or the, uh, rain swell, it needs to be set back, um, ten feet. So we want to make sure we get that condition in there. Um, and I believe, uh, bicycle parking. So on the plans that were submitted on one sheet, bicycle parking was shown adjacent to the purple, um, rear building extension, but it was within the pedestrian pathway and not within thirty feet of the main entry to the site. So we do feel that with the, um, amount of landscaping on the site and the amount of sidewalk space, that there are places that the bicycle parking for two spaces could be accommodated, but it needs to be moved from where it's being shown right now. So with that, um, we are recommending approval with these site revisions and in addition to the conditions mentioned on the previous page. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant's here, and we have public testimony.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
On the, uh, fifteen-foot wide spacing between loading area and abutting residential property.
Yes.
And I know this is probably unanswerable, but it would seem to me there would be some reduction in noise level uh, for the neighbors if you went to twenty feet from fifteen.
That may be true. I, um, took into account that it's currently used for parking in that rear area, and I don't know for sure, so it'd be a good question for the applicant. But I, um, I, I believe that the, uh, loading would be used maybe once or twice a day, whereas parking, parking would be in and out and as it is currently. So I, I felt like it was less of an impact based on that, but I'd be happy to hear that from the applicant, too.
And just so that I'm clear, the back of the buildings facing where the, the resident, the homes are.
The north, yes.
There's no windows there.
No windows.
So the residents will have privacy.
Correct. Uh, no windows along the north or the we- west.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Anywhere it touches a property line, no windows.
Any other questions?
Uh, so I think I saw they, they weren't required to have parking.
Correct, not required to have parking.
So if we didn't, uh, recommend the, or if we didn't give the, uh, special conditions on the reduction on the frontage and, and the side, uh, they, they should be able to.
They would be fine. They could reconfigure to have an ADA space maybe further back in the spot. Maybe instead of the loading, well, it has to be closest to the front door, excuse me, um, maybe the ADA space and then maybe some parallel spaces. Um, but as far as, um, minimum number required, we don't have a requirement.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to find this. Uh, I know I read it earlier, but what, remind me, what's the height, the max height in this?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet, and we're at twenty-seven here, correct?
Correct.
Um, okay, and then if HVAC is going on the rooftop, would screening be considered into the height as well?
Are, um, exempted, I believe. Um, let me just pull that up, too. Um, it is on page. Um, I believe it's on sixteen. Let me just, that's the C, C-two is sixteen, um. Building height, uh, there shall be, okay, so this is page seventeen. Um, that's the minimum setback for those type of. You find heights. Um, vertical projects, projections, this is page seventeen. Um, subsection three, building height. Vertical projections such as chimney, spires, domes, elevator shaft housings, towers, aerials, flagpoles, and similar objects not used for human occupancy are exempt from the maximum building height standards.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
No questions, but Mercero.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Um, is the applicant or his representative present?
I'm present. Uh, my name is Brett Pellic, and I'm with Metro Planning. Um, and we are the applicant's representative. We're located at, uh, Pete Forty-sixth A Street, Springfield, Oregon, nine seven four seven seven. Um, and I would just would like to thank, uh, Heather and Tammy for the excellent support and working through this. Um, not only they helped us work through the issues and work through the code, but also to come up with some really good recommendations to help, um, meet the requirements. And, uh, we have read through the conditions of approval, and, um, I really don't have much to add to what Heather just presented, um, but I'm here for questions. And if I can't answer them, I'll take notes and make sure you get answers to your questions.
Planning Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant's representative?
I just kind of noticed, uh, there's a mark on the, the floor plans for an elevator, but it looks like in that part of the building, it's only seven foot, seventeen foot ten. Uh, doesn't seem like the elevator would be able to go there, but just pointing that out.
Thank you.
You know, when was this? Sorry, uh, do you know when, when the building was originally built?
I don't have that right here with me right now.
I, I believe it received condition, uh, certificate of occupancy in twenty twenty-two, went through design review in nineteen twenty nineteen.
That sounds about right. It's been, it's been close to four years.
Is it by chance the same architect that built, uh, that designed this originally? Yes? Awesome, okay.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, structural engineer, I assume we have one involved?
Yes.
Yes, great.
Would, do you, um, Commissioner, do you want him to come up and answer some more questions since he is the architect? He needs to.
Perfect, yeah, come on up.
Please come forward and sit right there and, and make sure you have that turned on and give us your full name and address and all that information. You need to push, you need to push the button, so there you go.
Do I keep pushing it or?
No, like, you can let go.
Okay, cool. So, uh, my name is Richard Barbis.
There you go.
Okay, sorry. Uh, my name is Richard Barbis, and, um, I'm with Barbis Bentley Architects. And, um, let's see, where are the original, what's that?
Could you give us the address where the business is?
Yeah, one-two-nine-eight-seven Southwest Starview Drive, Tiger, Oregon.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Volbada, you want to continue with your questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, super interesting design. It sounds like you, you, um, helped design this originally back in, um, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. Um, was it originally designed to, to accept the, the, like, was it designed with this expansion in mind to, um, uphold a second story when originally built one story?
Yes, the, uh, right now, the roof structure, um, can support a second floor, so we made plans for that.
Awesome. Um, and I saw the stairs, um, are they only going in that, um, the full addition, the first and second floor addition? Or is there a second set of stairs going through from the original into?
By code, um, we are, because of the square footage, we were required to have two exits on the second floor, but, uh, we actually reduced the size of the second floor so that it actually, if, can you turn to the elevations? Yeah, there you go. Um, so if you can see the east, uh, elevation there, um, on the backside, uh, gridline E, uh, we actually set the second floor, uh, step back from the property line by, uh, it's an eight-foot total. And so there's two pieces to that. First, we're only able to have, uh, by doing that, we reduce the size of the second floor such that we only need one exit. And then, uh, also the other thing that it does, too, is it sort of, it doesn't make the, uh, for the neighbors, it doesn't make it quite so severe, so.
Awesome.
And we could actually reduce the size of the, uh, uh, right now, there's a parapet wall that's shown there. Um, I think it's showing as a. All right.
Four foot ten.
Um, it's showing as like a five-foot parapet wall. Um, we could reduce that down to a foot. So the building height in that area would only be about fourteen feet, as opposed to, um, the maximum would have been almost twenty-seven, ten, if we didn't step it back. And then, uh, by reducing it down, uh, it goes from sixteen, six inches or so down to, uh, about fourteen feet, so.
And just because I'm, I'm curious, are, is there like an expansion join or like, how are we, how are we connecting the new with the old?
Structurally, you mean, or?
You're just, is it just like being built up about, uh, abutting each other?
Yeah, so it's just that basically an addition that's going on top of the second, you know, going on top of the first floor. Um, and then, uh, the cement plaster that's on the side of the building basically just transitions with the existing cement plaster, so. And it's all wood frame.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Weiss, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Langston?
Nope, I have none.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any questions of the architect?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, now it's time for public testimony. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. We will hear, we will first hear testimony from proponents, that is, from people who support the application. Then we will hear testimony from the opponents. Do we have any proponents?
I have not received any requests for proponents.
Okay, how about the opponents?
Opponent, the first will be Michael Cooper.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Uh, yeah, my name is, uh, Michael Cooper. I live at four thirty-five West Berkeley Street, which is the property directly behind the, uh, proposed building. Um, I don't really know how this works, I just kind of wanted to share a little bit about kind of our situation that my wife and I are in. Um, and I understand there's a couple minute, two, three minute limit here, so, um, okay, perfect, thank you. Um, so, um, long story short, uh, my wife and I, um, actually just purchased the house, um, in January that's directly behind the, um, building. Um, and, uh, we kind of spent about a year kind of looking, trying to find a house to fit our needs. Um, we are, um, really trying to settle down and get roots into places. Um, so we settled in on Gladstone because the house, the property, and just everything about it really, uh, met our needs. And, um, it was really kind of a dream home situation. Um, and, uh, with that, we kind of poured our lifesaving into the situation and, uh, into the home because it's a beautiful home, beautiful area, all that kind of stuff. Um, and I think my biggest concern, um, with this whole process is just the fear of the property value, um, being diminished with this, with this expansion. Um, I'm all, I'm pro-business, I want people to succeed in life, and I would also like to have part of that success. Um, and so just with the. And so just with the expansion really coming up to our property line and it basically covers about seventy-five, seventy-three percent of our of our property line with this with this wall and building expansion, we're really concerned with the value of the home. You know, we put in a substantial down payment, all that kind of stuff. And so for me, that's that's my biggest concern. So I just wanted to raise that and let everyone know and just share that from my side of things.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do we have another?
We have two additional Katie Cooper.
Hi, I'm Katie Cooper. I also live at four thirty-five West Berkeley Street. Both of my husband and myself are home or we at times work from home as medical providers. So I too have concerns about the construction noise. It probably will be inappropriate at times to work with patients virtually with construction noise going on in the background. I understand some of that's inevitable because of the nature of the zoning, but that was a major factor when we looked into buying this house was there was space for an office and the the ability to work from home and incorporate that. And I do feel like that is impacted by this addition. Additionally, similar to what my husband said, the property value, but even just access to our backyard, our current property sits about one and a half feet, maybe two feet just lower than where their slab sits. So it's two and a half feet. Okay, so whatever height that they're going up is additional two and a half feet for us. So this morning, when I measured around ten AM, we had ninety-three inches is what our fence is currently or from ground to top of fence. It casts a hundred inches of shadow, so a little bit more than one to one ratio. So if that math plays out, over like eighty percent of our backyard will be shaded for the morning. Seasons change. I don't know how it will work beyond this month, but we have a garden back there. We spent a lot of time and money planting and getting that set up for the season. And there's concern that all of that was for naught. One other thing that is like kind of a kicker is when I'm standing in my kitchen window doing or standing in my kitchen, looking out my window, doing my dishes, I look out and I see sky. With the addition, I will no longer see the sky. I have pictures and documentation on my phone, if that's helpful. Additionally, from our upstairs bathroom, we have a window, our bathroom window will overlook a parking lot. I don't know if they want their customers looking up and seeing our bathroom window and vice versa. It just is kind of an odd combination. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The last is Jesse Lilydoll.
Please state your name and address, please.
Got it, Jesse Lilydoll at four four five West Berkeley Street. I am to the west of Katie and Cooper and northwest of the expansion program property. Katie and Cooper really hit on a lot of my points that I was hoping to bring to light here. I actually moved into this house, property owner, January first of two thousand and twenty. And within just a couple of short months, I started experiencing construction noise, both from my next door neighbor, their previous homeowner at four thirty-five. And then shortly after that, at ICSB, when they took down the property with a bunch of fruit trees on it and started building. I have had nonstop construction ever since until the property owners next door decided to sell. Only about four months now have I had any peace and quiet. And it was heartbreaking to hear that we were gonna potentially have this happen again. Along with that noise that, you know, I've experienced for the past four years, I've dealt with construction folks, I've dealt with delivery folks, noises at all sorts of times during the day especially. And then sometimes often at night, I know the the new, you know, time is midnight to five AM. So while we don't currently have a healthcare worker with us now, I do open my home to ER nurses, so we did have an ER nurse that lived with us during a lot of this construction. And it was really difficult for him, working at all hours to come home and then not be able to sleep because there's construction, there's people coming and going, the foot traffic is insane, there's another business just to the west of this Arlington ICSB that they are also in and out at all times of the day, especially early morning. And it has impacted us greatly. So not only is the noise and the high foot traffic an issue that I've personally just taken to heart, but also the the lack of light and sun visibility, as Katie had mentioned. We have a garden that we have put a lot of time and energy into and not being able to, you know, reap the benefits of being outdoors and in nature and being able to grow something in our own spaces. Pretty pretty much a big bummer as as a new homeowner, it's something that I really have enjoyed and it'll be a big bummer. You know, that's even more impacted than it already is with such a big building that is now going to come to the very edge, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate all the testimony. Is is that all that we have at this time?
That is all correct.
Okay. Now is the time for the applicant for rebuttal. Does the applicant have any further comments?
No, I have no further comments. Thank you.
The architect, do you have any comments? Please come forward and we record everything and it gets transcribed, so that's why you have to sit before the microphone.
So I definitely hear the concerns of the neighbors and things like that. And if I was in their situation, you know, we would, you know, everyone here would probably have the same concerns. The one thing that we did try to do is definitely set the second floor back to accommodate for not being so severe right on the property line. One thing that we would be willing to do is look at setting the first floor back another maybe a couple of feet in order to create a vegetation line through there so that they're not looking at building as much as they're looking at maybe arbiv, you know, arbividee going up and, you know, that kind of a thing. So, you know, we'd be willing to, you know, try to work with the neighbors and things like that and have a good rapport, so.
I commend you for that, I appreciate that because I I believe in compromises. So thank you very much. If there's no further testimony, is there anything, Ms. Austin, that you would like to speak upon regarding what was brought up?
Well, I, yes, the construction noise concern, I do want to just relate that the code, the municipal code, not the development code, does limit any kind of construction or noise of that level, seven AM to ten PM. So if there's anything happening outside of those hours, you are well within your rights to talk to the code compliance officer. She will address it instantly. That's what the city requirements are, so nothing before seven AM, nothing after ten PM, which seems pretty long actually, that you can be building on the site. The other thing I would address is just I appreciate the applicant's willingness to step back the building as well, because when I read the email that I believe Mr. Cooper sent today, issuing the same concerns that he testified on this evening, I re-reviewed the code to see if there was anything related to a building on a commercial property next to a residential property and requiring a setback. And I could only come up with those loading area spacings and the mechanical equipment, but not the building itself. So I am glad that the second floor is set down along the property line and that it's potentially going to come in a bit.
Okay. Anything further?
I would say that if the will of the planning commission is to, you know, accept that the building would be set back from the property line, that we talked to the applicant about exactly what that may be, if it's three feet, so that there's space for planting something like that, and then we make that a condition.
Okay, that would be under special conditions?
Yes, and that would be, you know, the applicant's allowed to propose it. And if they basically propose it or accept it, we don't have to link it to a condition in our code because they're basically saying they won't appeal it.
All right. Well, if there's no further testimony, I would entertain a motion to either close a public hearing or continue it to a date certain. What's the pleasure of the commission?
May I just ask that if you are thinking about the setback, we probably don't want to close the hearing until we hear from the applicant and come up with that number that you can set your.
Okay. I would like to hear the applicant.
Okay, I would I would ask that they come back up and that we can see.
Does the architect know how many feet or?
Probably not.
Do you know how many, like you said, you'd be willing to do a setback further from the property line? Please come forward. Sorry.
And the other thing I'd like to clarify is we're talking about the north property line because the building is currently along the west property lines, so I'd assume we're continuing along the west property line in line with the building. And so we're talking about the north property line. Okay, and that is the property line that separates from residential, whereas the other is commercial on the other side.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're thinking if we can, if our landscape architect would think that two feet would be enough for us to be able to plant a certain type of vegetation in there, then that's what we would propose is, you know, a two foot setback.
Would you be willing to lower that parapet down like you?
Yeah, we could definitely go lower that down to like a six inch parapet. We won't, there won't be any equipment on that or anything like that. It'll just be a lower parapet, so we could definitely accommodate for that as well.
That's awesome.
So two feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two feet spacing and then and then how high would the back building wall be just so that everybody?
So it's, when I was looking at the plan, it looked like it would be about the top of that wall reduced parapet would be around fourteen feet, something like that.
And I'll ask, would there be a possibility to do three feet or would that be too much?
Could we, me and the client, you know, have a conversation about that and get back to you guys on that?
Okay, would that mean that we would have to have another hearing or continue the hearing?
I think we'd want to make a decision with it settled, so do you?
I'd say two feet would be the max that we could go. That's kind of the direction we're going right now, so.
Okay, would that be acceptable, planning commissioners?
I think it absolutely helps, yeah.
Okay. Do you have anything to add? Okay. Would that be an improvement?
I mean, I think it would be, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're trying here. Yeah, no. Okay, that's good to hear, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So Chair Smith, if I may, so if you want to close the hearing and then deliberate and if you're interested in pursuing the condition, I would say that we'd want to add it in that in addition to the seven special conditions as stated in the staff report, that we would include a condition that the building be setback two feet from the north property line and that some sort of sight obscuring landscaping be placed in that strip.
Okay, we'll probably need your help when we're doing the motion.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure we're.
Okay.
Including it.
So what is the pleasure of the planning commissioner? Are we ready to adjourn the public hearing?
Motion to close a public hearing.
Okay, a motion to close a public hearing was made by Commissioner Weiss and seconded by Commissioner Langston. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercer.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Public hearing is closed. Okay, let's deliberate. Questions? Do we like to compromise?
Yes, I have a I have a comment or two I'd like to make. Is there any chance I can get you to put the, I think it was your second slide up that showed the zoning on the city blocks?
You got it. Sorry.
That, yeah, this one. This is one of those things that I think I can speak for my colleagues here that it's really difficult because two things can be true at once, and I think this is a case where it is. You have residential property owners that want to enjoy their property in a residential fashion, and you have business people that want to do the same with their property, both zoned appropriately. Some of the concerns that came up, construction noise, while it's not very pleasant, is a passing thing, it's gonna, it won't be much fun while it's being done, but it will go away and be and be silent. The two things that I wanted to really speak about are privacy and property values. We haven't, it's a similar, but it's the other, this Stone Oaks property just off of Oakfield Road, behind the Webster Road Apartments is a much more severe case than you're looking at. But these people on a cul-de-sac have a, basically, they don't have two feet, they've got probably a twenty foot lift in property, and then they have a three story apartment building directly behind their homes. They all initially complained about loss of property values. It's certainly when we were going to go to sell this place, it we're not going to get the value out of it that we wanted to have. And the other one is privacy, and that's, you know, I suppose if somebody wanted to look in your bathroom window all the time, that's that's not a pleasant thing, but I think maybe that the property values is the one that really sticks sticks with me. But again, you're both right. And it's it's a difficult thing for the planning commission. I'd like to make sure that people living residential property are able to enjoy it as residential property and business people are allowed to prosper.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm just curious, where else do we have the C two against residential? Is this the only stripper? There's a handful more.
It's all along Portland Avenue. So the entire stretch of Portland Avenue goes about two parcels in either direction and then we hit R five.
Gotcha.
We have a lot of mixed land use all throughout. I don't know if we want to call this the flatlands or the first edition or what, but it's a hodgepodge, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, I'm surprised that we don't have any like required buffer between. And I know this isn't like something for us to solve today, but that might be something that we want to consider, especially with all along Portland.
That's a great point, and as we think about a town center that would include our Portland Avenue and whether we go wider into that R five zoning, is there some appropriate buffering or spacing that we want to consider when we do that?
I would agree with that. Anyone else?
You know, I appreciate the the compromise made by the property owner and definitely makes me feel, you know, more better about the the setbacks exemptions as far as the front and side. So I think that helps for me, helps kind of make it easier to make decisions tonight.
Heather?
Yes.
Is there anything else you could think of that we could do to approve upon this or do you think this is pretty good?
I think once we condition in the building setback with sight obscuring landscaping in the two foot stretch and the building parapet or maximum building height in the rear at fifteen feet, I think would be a reasonable condition, then we've moved it as far as the applicant is willing to agree and still be able to develop their property by taking into consideration the neighbors.
Well, if we have no other questions, does anybody want to make a motion? You'll probably have to repeat all those special conditions for us, unfortunately.
I'm just writing them down so that I can read them and then we'll all have them.
Okay. The one thing I guess I'd I'd like to throw out there, I don't know if it would be considerable, but the back of the building where there's no windows, whether it be a beautiful mural or, you know, how you see some of those screenings that they grow greenery or whatever, would there be any consideration to possibly at least have something better to look at than the back of the building? Yes, please. I think all of that helps.
So I was kind of thinking. So, I was kind of thinking about that myself, especially on the second floor where the wall is setback. Is there something that we could do along that back wall there on the second floor? One of the difficult things is whenever you, I mean, I, I think it would be really cool to be able to put a, some sort of a wall planting screen on the back. The problem with that though is getting up there to water it, to make sure it's taken care of. And then once it, you know, if it's promised that that's gonna be there and it's just almost impossible to take care of, then, you know, it just possibly invites, you know, complaints and things like that. And so, I will, we will work to do whatever we can. And again, I know this doesn't help because it's not anything concrete, but anything we can do to soften it, we will look at, so.
Even if it was a beautiful mural or something painted that, you know, would not only benefit the company, but be pleasing to the eye for the neighbors.
Right, right.
So. So, that's something to keep in mind.
Right.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, commissioners. Go ahead. Unless there's more deliberations, I think.
Yeah, I know. That's why I was just curious where everybody was.
Is everybody ready to vote on this?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Wees, you as well?
Yep.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion. With the assistance of Ms. Austin.
May I recommend in addition, and then if it's acceptable, you can so move the conditions.
Excellent.
Stated, okay. Condition number three, special condition number three is the revised site plan condition that prior additions of building permits submit a revised site plan to Gladstone Planning Department, which includes, and we'd add two more bullet points. One would be a two-foot building setback along the northern property line with sight obscuring landscaping planted in the setback area. And the second bullet point would be maximum building height of fifteen feet along the northern property line.
Okay, so move. I think you need to read the file number two.
Okay.
The DR24.
I'll make a motion to approve special conditions pointed, laid out. And the proposed special conditions indicated on the design review for DR2401.
Before we move any further, I'd like to know, are both parties satisfied with some, with the, with the, with some of the ideas that have been proposed? Can you come forward, please?
Let me see, you might need to open it back up.
What?
You've closed the hearing, so you do need to open it again.
Yes.
So, I'd like to reopen public hearing DR-24-01. Please proceed.
Yeah, I, I think what you were saying earlier about the compromise, I think, you know, it, it hurts us, you know? And like you were saying, it's both sides who are in the right. And I think trying to figure out a reasonable way to get this done, I think we're okay with the situation.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you. And I hope the applicant is as well.
Might as well stay.
Yeah, we're good with that, so.
Good. Thank you very, very much. Okay, so now I have to go through the motion of closing the, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please? So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, a motion was made to close a public hearing by Commissioner Volbada and seconded by Pat Smith. Roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Mr. Langston.
Yes.
Mr. Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, public hearing is closed. Now, we need to go back and start what you started.
I'll make a motion that we approve application number DR-24-01 with the proposed special conditions indicated in design review and.
And as stated in this hearing?
As stated in this hearing.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Wees. Tammy, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. It has been approved. Okay, next is, do we have any business from the public, Tammy?
I have not received any requests.
Okay, how about business from the commissioners? I'll start with you, Jennifer.
No, nothing new for me.
Okay, Commissioner Wees?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight. It's great to hear the engagement. And I think a lot of us probably ended up at a planning commission meeting in the past for some reason similar. I know I did. And I just, I think it's, it shows that you showed up and there were changes made out of the good nature and goodwill of the applicant here. There, we're really here to uphold what's in the, in the code. And so, it, I just want people to see this, that, you know, coming, showing up can make a difference. And I'm really thanking everyone and encourage anyone that's out there watching this in the future, consider coming and speaking up for your neighborhood.
I second those words and I have no new business. Thanks.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any business?
I have no business, but I would like to rejoin you back at the the station you're at, other than sitting home and watching.
Well, we'll see what we can do there. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I don't have anything additional. Thank you.
I'm just, I, I like the engagement of everyone working together. I'm happy we were able to come up with some compromises and everyone's willingness to try to make everyone happy and satisfied with the outcome. Thank you commissioners for coming prepared. And that's the only thing I have. I would entertain a motion to close the meeting, adjourn it.
I'll make a motion to end the meeting.
I'll second. The motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting is adjourned at 7:39.